This meeting will now come to order. Good evening. The City Council will convene on Thursday, March 25, 2021, to hold a regular meeting at 7:30 p.m. for the purpose of discussing any and all business via in-person participation for the City Council only and remote participation for all others in accordance with Chapter 40A of the Massachusetts General Laws and Governor Baker's emergency order dated March 12, 2020. In accordance with the Governor's order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, General Laws, Chapter 30A, Section 18, and the Governor's March 15, 2020 order imposing strict limitation on the number of people that may gather in one place, this meeting of the City Council will be conducted via remote participation to the greatest extent possible. No in-person attendance of the members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access to proceedings in real time via technological means. Alternative public access to this meeting shall be provided in the following manner. Number one, this meeting is being televised by PBD Access Television on Comcast Channel 9 and RSN Channels 15, 614, and 1161. Number two, real-time public comment during public hearings can be addressed to the PBD City Council using the Zoom virtual meeting software for remote access. Users may view the meeting and make a comment or question to the chair via the audio option. This meeting is being taped by PBD Access Television and is also being recorded by our City Council sonographer. Let's all rise for a moment of silence. Would you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Mr. President, move approval of the record, please.
You've heard the motion by Counselor Gould. Are there any corrections to the minutes? Hearing none. Roll call vote, please.
Counselors Gould.
Yes.
Manny Martin.
Yes.
Sasslaw.
Yes.
Welton.
Yes.
Charis.
Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
Mazzulis.
Yes.
Turco.
Yes.
Rozignol.
Yes.
Melville.
Yes.
O'Neal.
Yes.
Motion carries 11 to 0.
Thank you. The first item under 4A is hearings. We are -- it'll be a meeting that was recessed from last -- from Thursday, March 11, 2021. It's an application for Victor C. Voe doing business as Elyian Nail Bar, 65 Floyd Street, Everett, Mass. I can see that the applicants on the Zoom -- would you like to just briefly state your explanation of this project for the group?
Thank you, Council President. This is Jack Kelty. I'm an attorney. I practice law at 40 Lowell Street, PBD, Mass. This matter was heard before the Council at the last meeting, and since then, I have had occasion to speak with Counselor Welton. I believe that the matter is before you, and there have been no additional comments made by any party since the last meeting, and we would hope that the City Council would approve this special permit.
Thank you, Counselor Kelty. Are there any members of the general public who'd like to speak either in favor or in opposition of this application? Please raise your hand in the Zoom application if you'd like to speak on this matter. Are there any members of the general public who'd like to speak either in favor or in opposition of this application? Please raise your hand in the Zoom application if you'd like to speak on this matter. Seeing no one, Counselor Welton.
Thank you, Mr. President. As Mr. Kelty had said, this is a pretty straightforward request in which the nail salon will be taking over a similar business use that was there prior. There were no concerns from any of the departments. However, I did want to make mention, as Counselor McGinn had pointed out at the last time we had a chance to discuss this, that we want to make sure that the petitioner observes the sector-specific COVID guidelines for personal care services as outlined by the Health Department. Aside from that, there were no other concerns that I had noted, no other concerns on my part. I certainly am in favor of moving forward with this.
Thank you, Counselor Welton. Are there any comments from fellow counselors? Seeing none, Counselor Welton.
Move to close public hearing.
You've heard the motion from Counselor Welton. Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call vote, please.
Counselors Gould.
Yes.
Manny Martin.
Yes.
Sasslaw.
Yes.
Welton.
Yes.
Charis.
Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
Mazzulis.
Yes.
Turco.
Yes.
Rozignol.
Yes.
Melville.
Yes.
O'Neal.
Yes.
Motion carries 11 to 0.
Thank you. Counselor Welton.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move to approve all papers being in order. The petition from Victor C. Voe doing business as Elyian Nail Bar, 65 Floyd Street, Everett, Mass, for a special permit seeking to operate a personal service establishment specifically in Nail Salon at 2 First Avenue, Unit 122, PBD, Massachusetts, as filed in accordance with Sections 4.2.5, 6.1, and 15.7 of the PBD zoning ordinance. So moved.
You've heard the motion by Counselor Welton. Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call vote, please.
Counselors Gould.
Yes.
Manny Martin.
Yes.
Sasslaw.
Yes.
Welton.
Yes.
Charis.
Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
Mazzulis.
Yes.
Turco.
Yes.
Rozignol.
Yes.
Melville.
Yes.
O'Neal.
Yes.
Motion carries 11 to 0.
Congratulations.
Thank you, counselors.
We'll now move to Hearing 4B, which was also recessed from Thursday, March 11, 2021. This is an application from Boston Auto Collision Center. I believe I see the applicant on the Zoom screen. Could you just please give a brief explanation of your plans on this request?
Thank you. My name is Joseph Dever. I'm an attorney. My office is in Linfield. I'm here on behalf of the applicant, Boston Auto Collision Center. I apologize, I think I'm late to this process, and I apologize for that, but it's my understanding that this hearing was recessed from last week, similar to the matter before us, and that there were two outstanding issues. One concerning a revised plot plan showing additional -- or showing parking spaces on the proposed lot for the auto body shop that is seeking a special permit here, and then also one -- an inspection by the fire department of the premises, along with a plan showing certain items, including fire extinguishers and other safety issues that was provided by the applicant. We are also respectfully requesting that this special permit be approved by the board this evening.
Thank you, sir. Counselor Sasslaw?
Thank you, Counselor.
I skipped a moment here. Are there any members of the general public who'd like to speak either in favor or in opposition of this application? Please raise your hand in the Zoom application if you'd like to speak on this matter. Are there any members of the general public who'd like to speak either in favor or in opposition of this application? Please raise your hand in the Zoom application if you'd like to speak on this matter. Seeing no one, Counselor Sasslaw.
Thank you, Council President. I'd like to make a motion to receive Item 8I and 8J.
You've heard the motion from Counselor Sasslaw. Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call vote, please.
Counselors Gould.
Yes.
Manny Martin.
Yes.
Welton.
Yes.
Charis.
Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
Mazzulis.
Yes.
Turco.
Yes.
Rozignol.
Yes.
Melville.
Yes.
O'Neal.
Yes.
Motion carries 11 to 0.
Counselor Sasslaw.
Thank you, Council President. So I did have the opportunity to go up to the location, meet both the owner of the property and the tenant, who would like to open up his business. Everything checked out. I'm comfortable, as I said in the previous meeting. This was also -- previous use was a auto body shop, so people familiar with that, and they're not extending the footprint or anything of that nature. There was a question regarding the parking. I reviewed that with them, and as you can see, Item 8I addresses where the parking spaces are for this particular tenant, and I have no further questions, and I will be supporting the special permit this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Sasslaw. Any comments or questions from fellow counselors? Counselor Rozignol.
Thank you, Mr. President. Through you to the petitioner, the plot plan that we have shows 15 parking spaces, which was the number that was shown previously at the last meeting, yet on the application on Page 5, it says total number of vehicles to be parked on site 20, and total number of off-street parking spaces existing on the proposed is 50. So that was my confusion. Last meeting, as well as this one, is the differentiation between the 15 stated on the plot plan, both last meeting as well as this one, and the 50 total number of spaces on Number E, as well as 20 vehicles being parked on site.
Thank you, Counselor. Again, I apologize, I am late to this process. I think it was my understanding that what the Council was looking for was a designation of the spaces that were directly attributable to the applicant, to the tenant, and I think the number of spaces identified on the initial application related to the number of cars that could be parked on the lot as a whole, and the clarification was to -- as to which spots, and that's the 15 spots that are indicated on the revised plot plan, that are attributed to the tenant, for the tenant's use.
Counselor Rozignol.
Yes. Through you, Mr. President, to the petitioner. I understand that, but I mean, just easy math just doesn't add up, at least to me, where there's only 15 spaces, but you're talking about 15 -- 50 vehicles.
There are other uses -- I'm sorry, Counselor. There are other uses of the property that are in effect as well. These are the spaces that would be attributed solely to the auto body shop that operates in the rear of the building.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor McGinn.
Thank you, Mr. President. Through you to the petitioner, the attorney. Just kind of continuing on the question that Counselor Rozignol asked, when I look at the application, I see the 50, and I understand the explanation you gave, but then further in the -- it indicates that there'll be 20 total number of vehicles to be parked on site 20, and then I see five employees. So I guess to interpret from that, that it's 15 vehicles for sale and five for employees?
There'll be no vehicles for sale.
I'm sorry, not for sale, but for repair. So is that the math?
That would be the maximum number of vehicles that could be there at any one time. It's unlikely that there would be 15 there at a time, but there would be space there to park 15 vehicles for either employees that work there or cars that are waiting to have auto body repairs.
So through you, Mr. President, to the attorney. So does the lease contemplate these 15 spaces for your applicant, for your client?
I don't have the lease in front of me, Councilman. I could provide that if necessary, but that would be the agreement between the landlord and the applicant and the tenant.
Was the -- was this -- maybe Counselor Sasslaw knows the answer to this. Was the parking plan that was submitted here, it's in our packages as Item 8I, was that signed off by the property owner? I'm just looking for some acknowledgement that the property owner.
If I may interject, Councilman.
Yes.
The owner provided the diagram showing the numbered parking spaces, yes. That was provided by the property owner through its trustee, Joseph Mornau, Joe Pat Realty Trust is the owner of the property. It's Mr. Mornau that provided the diagram with the parking spaces listed thereon.
Great, that's what I'm looking for.
Counselor McGinn, just if I could -- Counselor Sasslaw had some additional information he was going to provide.
No, no, he had just addressed me, and I didn't want to answer out of order, but I think, Counselor McGinn, you heard that the property owner actually provided the map. Just to -- if it makes sense to my fellow counselors on Item E, so the property as a whole is 50, that's why that's there, because there's another business that runs out of their mobile straightening -- mobile wheel straightening business, and as he said, 15 spots, and then five for employees. I went up there, I don't see parking as an issue. I recognize we needed the map to clarify that. I don't know if it makes sense to change the 50 down to 15 or 20, because really, that's the entire property, but I think I'm open that the applicant is -- the applicant doesn't want any misunderstanding at all, so.
Thank you, Counselor Sasslaw. Counselor McGinn, you still have the floor.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. Through you to Counselor Sasslaw. That makes perfect sense to me. I appreciate that. I was looking for that clarification, some traceability back to the property owner that they're bought into this, and you've explained that, as did the attorney, so thank you for that. Thank you, Mr. President, and I have no more questions.
Any other counselors want to comment? Seeing none, Counselor Sasslaw.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing, move to close the public hearing.
You've heard the motion from Counselor Sasslaw. Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call vote, please.
Counselors Gould.
Yes.
Manny Martin.
Yes.
Sasslaw.
Yes.
Welton.
Yes.
Charis.
Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
Mazzulis.
Yes.
Turco.
No.
Yes.
Rozignol.
Yes.
Melville.
Yes.
O'Neal.
Yes.
Motion carries 11 to 0.
Counselor Sasslaw.
Thank you. I'd like to move to approve all papers being in order. The application from Boston Auto Collision Center, 5 Turnpike Road, Ipswich, Mass., for a special permit seeking to operate an auto body shop repair and paint shop repair business at 80 Newbury Street, PBD, Mass., as filed in accordance with Sections 4.2.5, 6.1, and 15.7 of the PBD zoning ordinance. So moved.
You've heard the motion by Counselor Sasslaw. Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call vote, please.
Counselors Gould.
Yes.
Manny Martin.
Yes.
Sasslaw.
Yes.
Welton.
Yes.
Charis.
Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
Mazzulis.
Yes.
Turco.
Yes.
Rozignol.
Yes.
Melville.
Yes.
O'Neal.
Yes.
Motion carries 11 to 0.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. Sasslaw, and thank you to the other counselors present. Thank you.
The next hearing is Item 4C, which was recessed from Thursday, March 11, 2021, an application from Alina Limited Liability Corporation, 35 Boston Street, Middleton, Mass., with the applicant.
Attorney Kelty is present.
Thank you, Counselor Kelty. I realized we've got a --
Late ad.
Late ad from you, late number three. Counselor Mazzulis?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to receive a late communication from the Office of Attorney Kelty. So moved.
Counselor Mazzulis, just point of order, the motion would be to receive and approve late communication number three.
Right, to receive and approve a new date of April 22, 2021. He'd like to recess the meeting, Mr. Chairman. So moved. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Mazzulis. You've heard the motion from Counselor Mazzulis. Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call vote, please.
Counselors Gould.
Yes.
Manny Martin.
Yes.
Sasslaw.
Yes.
Welton.
Yes.
Charis.
Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
Mazzulis.
Yes.
Turco.
Yes.
Rozignol.
Yes.
Melville.
Yes.
O'Neal.
Yes.
Motion carries 11 to 0.
Thank you, Mr. Kelty. The next item on the agenda is Hearing 4D. Click over, please, read the notice, please.
Notice is hereby given that the City Council of the City of PBD, acting as the special permit granting authority, will conduct a public hearing on Thursday evening, March 25, 2021, at 7:30 p.m., and conduct said public hearing in person, City Council only, in the Frank L. Wigan Auditorium, 24 Lowell Street, PBD, Mass., and remotely via Zoom for all other public participation, on the application from Parisqueve Norigian, 5 Station Road Salem, Mass., for a special permit, requesting to amend Special Permit 13-2005, specifically Condition Number 2, hours of operation, to operate Monday through Friday, 9:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., Saturday, 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., and Sunday, 9:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m., at 60 Washington Street, PBD, Mass., as filed in accordance with Sections 4.2.5, 6.1, and 15.7 of the PBD zoning ordinance. For remote participation using the Zone platform, please visit www.pbd-ma.gov, under City Calendar on the homepage, or contact the City Clerk's Office. Zoom information will not be available until the Friday before the meeting. PBD City Council, Counselor Mark J. O'Neal, City Council President.
Thank you, Allison. Would the applicant please state your name and address for the record?
Parisqueve Norigian. I'm 5 Station Road in Salem.
Thank you. And could you also please provide a brief explanation of your plans on this request?
Sure. So I'm looking to operate and get a special permit to operate a hair salon on 60 Washington Street. I'm looking to extend the hours. So there's been a salon there for 15 years, and I'm just looking to take over and to change the hours.
Thank you. Are there any members of the general public who'd like to speak either in favor or in opposition of this application? Please raise your hand in the Zoom application if you'd like to speak on this matter. Are there any members of the general public who'd like to speak either in favor or in opposition of this application? Please raise your hand in the Zoom application if you'd like to speak on this matter. We've got attendee with the number 19782. Could you please state your name and address for the record?
My name is Joanne Pinkham. I live at 61 Washington Street, PBD, Mass. My concern is the hair salon that was there previously from 2005 had a limited number of hours, and it was also stated in the permit that they would allow parking on the premises. So my concern is with the longer hours, I would assume that there would be more hair dresses present, creating more parking issues, where this is multi-families in the area, 2, 3, and a few 4s right on both sides of me. So that's mostly my concern is about the parking, and if there will be parking on the premises, and if that becomes an issue, then I would want to readdress it again.
Thank you, ma'am. Would the applicant like to comment this time?
Yes, I completely understand your concern. So, yes, the way that I'm going to schedule it out is there will be a total of four employees, however, it's going to be two in the morning shift and two in the late shift. So there'll only be two employees on.
Okay.
At this time, I'd like to ask Counselor McGinn to speak.
Thank you, Mr. President. I've been in contact with the applicant, Ms. Norigian, and as she indicated, the location has been operated as a hair salon for the past 15-plus years. Also, as she indicated, the request is to transfer the existing special permit and modify the hours of operation. The clarification that the applicant just made with respect to the neighbor's comments is consistent with my understanding, while the application states four employees, that Ms. Norigian plans to typically have two employees working at any given time. It's a condition of the existing permit that off-street parking be provided by the landlord. That was something that the abutter raised here a moment ago. That would continue to be a condition of this transferred permit, and Ms. Norigian indicated that the property lease provides that that arrangement would endure. So I think Ms. Norigian's intent is to run a fairly small-scale business servicing customers by appointment only, and you know that the impact would be no greater than what we've seen at this location in the past. I am -- my intention is to support this application. I would just comment that the abutters' comments, Ms. Pinkham from 61 Washington Street, is correct in terms of her description of the area, the multifamily residential uses and so forth, and there's two residential units in the building, you know, and there is limited off-street parking. So the description and the concern of the abutter is, I think, very valid, but I do think that, given what's operated there in the past, and that the intent is for this to be relatively consistent with that, with the exception of some additional hours, gives me some comfort that it's not going to create a problematic situation. So my intention is to support this application, and at this time, I defer to other counselors for comment, if there are any.
Thank you, Counselor McGinn. Would any other counselors like to speak? Counselor Melville. Go.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I'm just curious, is the off-street -- if I'm looking at the building, is the off-street parking, I'm assuming, is to the left? This is to the applicant?
No, it's to the right.
It's to the right, okay. All right, so the tenants --
So I'm sorry.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
So I would be allowed two spots right there, so it'd be myself and an employee, and it would be appointment only for the clients.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Counselor Turco.
Thank you, Mr. President. Through you to Counselor McGinn. Counselor McGinn, just for my own education, so this is in our two districts, so I'm assuming it's a pre-existing non-conforming use, and before you answer that, or in addition to that, again, just from my own knowledge, what was it before it was a hair salon?
Mr. President, through you to Counselor Turco. I don't recall what it was prior to 2005, but this is not a new -- we're not -- the request before us isn't to issue a new permit, this is a transfer. So it would be a transfer, and the reason -- normally, that wouldn't generate a hearing. What causes the hearing is the expansion of the hours, so the change in the condition. So I guess the answer is yes, it's pre-existing non-conforming, and the answer to the other part of your question is what was there previously? I don't know, but I'm not sure as to the significance of that relative to the application.
Absolutely no significance at all. Through you, Mr. President, to Counselor McGinn. As I stated before I asked the question, I was just -- I was curious, as to -- it has no relation to the hearing at all, except for the application stating that it's an hour or two, so I just wanted to confirm that it was a pre-existing non-conforming use, but my question about the prior use was just my own -- But my question about the prior use was just my own curiosity. That is it.
Through you to Councilor Turco. Now, you've got me very curious too, so I'll be checking. As it bothers me, having lived in Wood Two all the time, that, leather shop, you're correct. That's it, Council Melville, thank you.
Any other comments? Just to make sure everyone heard, Council Melville wins the prize. It was a leather shop, just very good. Any other comments from fellow councils? Hearing none, Council McGinn.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would move to recess the public hearing to April 8. So moved.
You've heard the motion from Councilor McGinn. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Councilors Gould.
Yes.
Mary Martin. Saslaw. Welton.
Yes.
Charis. McGinn.
Yes.
Metzulis.
Yes.
Turco.
Yes.
Rozignol.
Yes.
Melville.
Yes.
O'Neal.
Yes.
Motion carries 11 to 0.
Thank you, we'll see you in a few weeks.
Thank you.
We'll now move to hearing 4E, which is an application from 535 Lowell Street Limited Liability Company at 535 Lowell Street. The clerk will please read the notice.
Notice is hereby given that the City Council of the City of Peabody, acting as the special permit granting authority, will conduct a public hearing on Thursday evening, March 25, 2021, at 7:30 p.m. and conduct said public hearing in person, City Council only, in the Frank L. Wigan Auditorium, 24 Lowell Street, Peabody, Mass. And remotely via Zoom for all other public participation on the application from 535 Lowell Street, PBD LLC, 109 State Street, Boston, Mass., for a special permit seeking to construct a drive-through window for a restaurant to be operated by Cracked Kitchen at 535 Lowell Street, Peabody, Mass., as filed in accordance with Sections 4.2.5, 6.1, and 15.7 of the PBD zoning ordinance. For remote participation using the Zoom platform, please visit www.pbd-ma.gov under City Calendar on the homepage or contact the City Clerk's Office. Zoom information will not be available until the Friday before the meeting. PBD City Council, Councilor Mark J. O'Neal, City Council President.
Thank you. I can see that the applicant is on the Zoom screen. Could you please state your name and address for the record?
Yes, good evening. My name is Brian Dundon. I am a site civil engineer with the engineering firm of R.J. O'Connell &amp; Associates. Can you hear me?
Sir, that was just a little hard to hear. I don't know if, there's a little bit of echo. I don't know, I have no idea how to fix that, but it's just a little hard to hear. Maybe you have to either speak closer to the microphone on your phone.
Yes, is this better?
Yes, thank you, proceed.
Yes, good evening. Like I said, my name is Brian Dundon. I am here on behalf of the project proponent, 535 Lowell Street, PBD, seeking the City Council's approval on a special permit application to allow a restaurant-type use for the drive-through window to be constructed at an existing retail shopping center located at 535 Lowell Street in Peabody, Mass., more commonly known as PBD Commons. Just by way of a little bit of background on permitting history on this site, the project proponent submitted a special permit application back in May of 2017 to perform certain renovations at the center. Essentially, what happened was the former Bonkers Family Entertainment Center building was demolished and what was constructed was a 30,000-square for family entertainment, freestanding building for a family entertainment, family that is operated by In The Game. In addition to that, an 11, an additional 11,000 square feet of retail-type development was also programmed. The City Council granted that special permit. And as a result, we obtained site plan approval on said application in July of 2016 with certain amendments approved by the planning board in April of 2017 and May of 2019. Just a little bit of familiarity with the existing site. It is a, an existing single parcel of land, approximately five acres in area. It is located at the northeast corner of the intersection of Lowell Street with Bourbon Street. The project proponent over the past couple of years is undertaking a complete renovation of the site in which the majority of the site's site improvements have been substantially completed as of November of 2020. There is still additional development that can occur at the site, but at this moment, there is no tenant plant for that additional piece. But all the site infrastructure, be it utilities, parking, and landscaping, have all been constructed and completed as of November 2020. So we're here, again, as previously mentioned, we're here tonight before the council to seek a special permit in accordance with the table of uses such in 4.2.5 for a restaurant with a drive-through type use that would occupy, the tenant would be Cracked Kitchen. And Cracked Kitchen is a restaurant-type use that caters to breakfast and lunches. They typically do not do any evening, evening meals. They would occupy about 1,700 square feet of the existing building that is adjacent to the CBS building. And it's identified on the site plan, SP1, as Cracked Kitchen, 17,000 or 1,750 square feet. And to the rear of that building, which fronts along Bourbon Street, we have identified the location of where that drive-through window would be located. We have positioned the window, the way the site lays out, we have positioned the window such that patrons who utilize a site and want to visit the Cracked Kitchen, utilize the Cracked Kitchen drive-through option for, to purchase their food, that it would done us such a matter that the drive-through, the use of the drive-through window and the queue lane would be completely segregated from the overall vehicular and pedestrian movements within the shopping center. So there will be minimal conflicts that would be anticipated by the use of this drive-through. The drive-through queue lane has the ability to queue up 15 vehicles. And that would get you to the rear corner of the CBS that has its closest frontage to Lowell Street. We have also incorporated into the drive-through component is that, is a bypass lane. So in the event that the queue line gets long and someone does not want to sit and wait, they have the ability to exit the drive-through lane through the bypass lane and then exit the site. The exiting of the, of the, of the drive-through window component as well as the drive-through lane, we have designed it in such a fashion that as you exit, you are forced to exit onto Bourbon Street. In other words, you take a right up from the drive-through lane onto Bourbon Street to go to your destination. You will not be permitted to take a left turn lane as you exit the drive-through lane to, to go to the front of a shopping, a shopping center. The City Council has the authority to grant a special permit pursuant to Section 6.1.2 of the zoning ordinance, provided that the use will satisfy a desirable local need and its design and appearance will not be injurious to the establishment or future character of the vicinity and the neighborhood and that it shall be in harmony with the general purpose and intent of the ordinance. The City Council's decision on said application shall consider the following: ingress and egress to property or structures thereon with particular reference to automotive and pedestrian safety, inconvenience, traffic flow, and control of access in case of fire or other catastrophe within the site and in relation to adjoining streets, properties, or improvements. The property is currently serviced by three, three curb cuts. There are two full-size curb cuts that are located along the Bourbon Street property frontage and one restricted curb cut that is located along the Lowell Street frontage. It should be noticed, it should be noted that the restriction on the Lowell Street frontage is that as vehicles exit the site onto Lowell Street, they are prohibited from taking a left turn movement. That was part of the initial special permit application that was presented back in 2017, a requirement of that. The drive-through window for Cracked Kitchen has been planned to be located along, along its rear wall and position sets up, it provides a queue length for about 15, 15 vehicles. And it is completely segregated from the overall daily operation of the shopping center with vehicular and traffic movements. So there will be minimal conflicts. The drive-through and bypass things have been designed to require vehicles to exit the site via Bourbon Street. Left turn movements will be prohibited. The planned location of the drive-through window will not oppose any restrictions to police, fire, or ambulance apparatus accessing the property. A second consideration that the council needs to take into account is provisions for off-site loading and unloading of vehicles incidental to the service of the building and related uses on the site. Cracked Kitchen service deliveries are in the form of a van-type or a box-type truck. It will be accepted at their rear egress door. Deliveries will be received prior to the restaurant being opened to the public. The anticipated deliveries on a weekly basis are as follows: food items will be delivered to the premise twice a week. Bread will be delivered daily. Dairy and produce, there will be four deliveries during the course of the week. And a linen delivery once, once a week. Possible noise, glare, and odor effects of the use on adjoining properties and properties generally in the district. The construction of the drive-through window to accommodate Cracked Kitchen will not result in an increase in noise, generation of solar glare, or generate obnoxious odor that will have a detrimental impact to the existing tenants and/or abutting properties. Utilities within reference to location, available compatibility. The construction of the drive-through window to accommodate a restaurant-type use to be operated by Cracked Kitchen will not result in an increase in demand for water or sewer services. The utility services to support the recently completed renovations at the subject site have adequate capacity to accommodate said use. Another consideration is screening and buffering with reference to type, dimension, and character. The recently completed site improvements to the shopping center provides a 10-foot-wide landscape buffer strip along the property frontage to Bourbon Street. The installation of the drive-through window will not require any alterations to be made to said buffer strip. It remains as is. Required yards, landscaping, and other open spaces. The construction of the drive-through window will not require any alterations to existing landscape and/or open space areas that were constructed as part of the recently completed renovations. In addition, there will be no change to the landscape areas located within the front side and rear yards. Proximity to municipal facilities, the construction of the drive-through window will have no impacts to city-owned facilities. Protection of adjoining premises in the surrounding neighborhood from the proposed use of the site. The project locusts in abutting properties are located within the Business Regional, Business Regional Zoning District. Restaurants with drive-through type uses are subject to the issuance of a special permit from the City Council. A restaurant-type use with a drive-through window is a compatible use that is allowed within Business Regional Zoning District. And there are a number of fast-food-type restaurants adjacent to the PBD Commons Shopping Center. Adequacy of the construction and proposed maintenance of disposal, of disposal facilities for sewage, refuges, and other waste and methods for drainage of surface water. The construction of the drive-through window to accommodate Cracked Kitchen will not result in an increase in demand of utilities which currently service the site. There will be no increase in stormwater flow which discharges from the site or change in rainfall runoff characteristics that were previously, that were previously approved under the Planning Board Site Plan Review Application back in 2016 and then amended in 2019. Adequate trash and refuse facilities have been provided throughout the site to accommodate the current tenant use. There is a refuse area already built into, is already built to the rear of Cracked, the Cracked tenant space for their use. The last criteria to be reviewed by the council on said application is adequacy of all other municipal facilities, fire, and police protection. The construction of the drive-through window will not have a detrimental impact on police or fire services to the property. The recently completed renovations were completed in accordance with the approved site plans and provide adequate facilities to accommodate the police and fire services. We did have a couple of plans that show, rendering site plans that kind of show as you approach the drive-through window, what a customer would be viewing. I'm not sure if it's appropriate. If you would like to review those, I'd be more than happy to show those. I think Allison would have those. They're provided to you in paper format. At this time, I'd be more than happy to review those with you if the council so chooses and address any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Dundon. We'll, we'll get to the diagrams just one moment here because the late communications. I'll ask Councilor Saslaw to receive them. Are there any members of the general public who'd like to speak either in favor or in opposition of this application? Please raise your hand in the Zoom application if you'd like to speak on this matter. Are there any members of the general public who'd like to speak either in favor or in opposition of this application? Please raise your hand in the Zoom application if you'd like to speak on this matter. Seeing no one, Councilor Saslaw.
Thank you, Council President. I'd like to make a motion to receive late communication 1, late communication 2, and late communication, late communication 5.
Thank you, Councilor Saslaw. You've heard the motion from Councilor Saslaw. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Councilors Gould.
Yes.
Mary Martin.
Yes.
Saslaw.
Yes.
Welton.
Yes.
Charis.
Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
Metzulis.
Yes.
Turco.
Yes.
Rozignol.
Yes.
Melville.
Yes.
O'Neal.
Yes.
Motion carries 11 to 0.
Councilor Saslaw.
Thank you, Council, Council President O'Neal. So nice job, Mr. Dundon. I know you're not an attorney. I appreciate all the work you put into your presentation tonight. So this is the continued redevelopment of PBD Commons, otherwise known as In The Game, formerly known as Bonkers Plaza and for all those history buffs, Perry Supreme Plaza. Mr. Yaba, we've had a long journey here. We've started this probably about seven years ago, seven-plus years ago. And I appreciate, you know, everything through the pandemic. I know it hasn't been easy for many businesses. And obviously, your major tenant was greatly affected by the pandemic. So I'm happy to see that your vision is coming to fruition. One of the things that came up when I worked with Mr. Yaba on this project, quite frankly, I had some major concerns about safety. I had a lot of concerns about safety. First thing I did is I met with Captain Richards. We went over the, we met with Mr. Yaba and his engineers, and we went over his vision. And what I requested of Mr. Yaba is I really wanted everyone in this room who's going to go down this to go down this to really understand what is going down, what is going on down there. And late communication five is really what I had requested. I wanted everyone to see exactly what basically it's going to look like, and I appreciate that, Mr. Yebba, providing that. I think, as I say, a picture's worth a thousand words, and I think this picture and these renderings are perfect. I noticed the fact that you put the menu board on the left-hand side, which is great. If it was on the right-hand side, maybe they couldn't see it, or they might go in the other lane, so I appreciate the fact that you did that. I don't even think we even talked about that, but from a safety point of view, that's great. I will most likely be supporting this. I don't see any reason why not. I do want to give my councils an opportunity to ask any questions they may have. The only couple of things I did want to bring up, Mr. Yebba, was I'd like to make sure that with your tenants that are in there currently, some of them like to go out and smoke, and I think it's important that you really make sure that they know that, you know, that really can't happen anymore because out that back door, there is going to be traffic. That being said, I would assume that also you would want, not want to encourage them to smoke in the front of the property so that people have to walk through that. So, I'm going to trust that and leave that to you, and I'm confident that you'll take care of that. The only other issue that I wanted to let the council know is we have changed the traffic patterns down there, as was discussed earlier. When you leave Bonkers Plaza and you want to go to, you want to go to east, you want to go east, you now have to exit down Bourbon Street. And the old exit was you could go right or left off the main entrance to Bonkers Plaza. We're the signers. And to Mr. Yebba's credit, the no left-hand turn, you put signs up, but it really wasn't designed as pronounced as we want it to be. He admitted it. I've seen it. Captain Richards has seen it. For those people out there, if you're taking a left, you know, you're going to get pulled over and get cited, and I hope, I ask that you don't for safety purposes. We've designed it this way with mass DOT for our safety purposes. But as soon as the weather breaks, just so everyone knows, Mr. Yebba is in the process of hiring a contractor to make that right turn only much more pronounced so that people don't make that mistake that we've seen. But as I said, it's been a long journey, and I know we still have a few spaces open, but at this point, I'd like to open it to my fellow councils to ask any questions that they would. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Sassla. Any councils? I see Councilor Turco's hands up. Councilor Turco?
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Threw you to Councilor Sassla first. Thank you for the information, the late ads from the building commissioner that explained that why we're doing this as a combined permit rather than two separate. Honestly, I can generally think of a question or two to ask, and I just have to say to Mr. Dundon from RJ O'Connell, everything was answered. I looked, at first glance, I said I wish they would do a flashing stop sign, and then I looked up at the top of the map, and there's a flashing stop sign, and then they said they should do multiple stops at the end of the drive-through, and I looked, and there were three stops at the end of the drive-through. So, and my last question that I would have asked is the queue-up area, you know, with concern about backing up onto Lowell Street and 15 vehicles, if they back up 15 vehicles at that location, I don't think Crack Kitchen will be around very long. So, I'm confident that I would support this. I think everybody's, everything's been answered very well.
Thank you, Councilor Turco. Councilor Schreist?
Thank you, Council President. The one thing, you know, I've researched the company. I know they have one other location, and the menu looks fantastic, looks like something I would like to grab a sandwich from. But my concerns are, and again, this is the facility, the place is not in Ward Four, it's Ward Five, but Ward Four and Five share Bourbon Street, and we share the Ledgewood and Bourbon Street condominiums. I have the left of going up Bourbon, so the right-hand side there. And I'm happy that when this whole design was being developed, they were making it a right-hand turn onto Lowell Street, and you would have to go around the back to Bourbon Street to go to a left at the stop sign, stoplight. And it's making all the cars going out to take a left onto Lowell Street, head east, to go out that Bourbon Street side, and it's putting more cars on Bourbon Street as we knew and stuff. But when you get to, when you now, didn't anticipate a drive-through being there, and we know the drive-through is, it really is, hopefully, be successful, it's going to have quite a bit more traffic coming out of, onto Bourbon Street. And as Ledgewood and Bourbon Street residents come out that way, but right at that turn to come out to the right on Bourbon Street, you have a couple driveways directly across the street as cars are coming out also. I do know the coffee shop that's on the right-hand side, the corner of Lowell Street and Bourbon Street. When you go through that drive-through and you're exiting, you are going back into the traffic of the parking lot before getting out to the exit to Bourbon Street, and it's numerous times that I've been there and seen that it's quite tricky. And looking at this drive-through, and I appreciate all the information that you provided, to me, it seems very tight. When you have the drive-through lane itself being 10 feet wide, and then the ongoing traffic being 12 feet wide, the, did some measurements today, and, you know, a full-size pickup truck is about nine feet wide, and with the mirrors, too, that there's going to be a lot of full-size vehicles going through there. And then when you come down to the end after the drive-through window, it actually puts you into the other lane that's exiting, too, and it's to your right-hand side, so it's not always very visible. You come and picking up your food at the window, coming up, I know there's a stop sign, and everyone stops at every stop sign there is in the city, I know. And coming into that traffic lane before exiting out to the next stop sign, but you also have the lane of all the cars coming out of the parking lot down that chute, onto the left-hand side of the building. And for the cars to be coming to a stop coming through the drive-through, I know they gave that little diagram of the site lane, but it's not that far, the site lane isn't that great seeing the cars coming down that's going to be going the speed limit, I'm sure, through that parking lot. So, I am concerned about how much safety that is with cars coming through the drive-through there. Just doesn't seem to, especially when the cars are stopped into that lane to the right-hand side, they don't have a great view going down to the side of the building, and any pedestrians that's coming across that driveway to the left-hand side, right? I don't see a, I think that area that's blue dots are, hopefully, that's pavement and walk-in area. Now, also with all that, you have the dumpster across the two lanes. So, I know throughout the day, people are going to be bringing trash throughout that, out to that dumpster, so you're asking the people to go across the drive-through lane and the zip-through lane, for lack of better words, to go to the dumpster. And again, one lane is 10 feet until it gets down to the end, and it bumps back into a narrower lane, and the other one is 12 feet. And I'm just wondering, when they're plowing snow, I'm assuming they're going to be going with traffic when they plow in the snow during the day, how are they going to get that snow down to the end, curve out to the right, and I'm assuming back out to the left and not putting it out in the street, Bourbon Street? And the same thing going down that little lane going by the building. So, that, I love the fact that we have it as business, but I'm really concerned with how this is being developed, because I've seen a few drive-throughs in the city, and we just scratch our heads. I love the fact that you can get 15 cars queuing up, but it's just that, at the end, if you, your food's not ready at the window, do you move up to have them run it out, or, you know, to check? Everyone's, we always want to be checking our food when we get to takeout. I'm just very, very concerned that you're, that exiting is really, to me, it's dangerous. You're going into the zip lane, you're stopping, you're not seeing the cars coming down, you got to stop at the other side, you got no left-hand turn, which is probably reasonable, but it's just so congested right there. So, that's one, and if I may, I'll ask the petitioner to, I guess, get me understanding why it isn't so dangerous. The petitioner said the food is going to be delivered on a box truck, and it's going to be to the left, to the back door. And again, this is why I'm concerned with the space. But then he says that, and I'm assuming he's stating the food's going to be delivered, the supplies are going to be delivered before opening, because I would have concerns about blocking the lanes there with a driver delivering the product. But he says it's going to be delivered before opening time. Well, they open up at six, so does that mean they're going to be delivering like five in the morning, four? I'm assuming it's going to be early, and I'm not quite sure if that is allowed, that this can be delivered. I don't think deliveries can be made prior, I want to say six or seven o'clock, and I'm going to ask the clerk for that correct information, and if I'm correct, deliveries cannot happen before a certain time in the morning. I guess I can stop, ask Council President if that can be answered now, so if it is, if I'm wrong, I can, you know, excuse myself from that.
Yes, Councilor Schreist, we can, I don't have that information. I have my ordinance book there, but did you want to give the applicant a chance to respond to some of your concerns?
Yeah, that was going to be my next, my next thing. Again, I'm happy about the business. I'm just really concerned about how tight all that is right there, and the traffic just continuing now, it's going to generate more traffic, obviously, because we want them to do well, and they want to do well. They're coming out on Bourbon Street, and it's going to be early in the morning, that's when people want their egg sandwiches, and it's going to be my constituents leaving Bourbon and Ledgewood also. Thank you. I asked the petitioner if he, I know it was a lot that I said, if you could help me out.
Yes. This is Brian from RJ O'Connell. Regarding some of the traffic, just a little bit of background, too, we, the project applicant, Mr. Yebba and myself, when we submitted the original or the initial special permit application to both the City Council and to the Planning Board, we did do a comprehensive traffic study, and we did take into account multiple uses. In other words, we did recognize the fact that the Bonkers building was going to be demolished, and a family, a comparable family entertainment type use, i.e. In the Game, was going to substitute that use. But for the remaining development of the shopping center, we did take into account retail type, the traffic study took into account if there were small restaurant slash fast-food type uses, office type uses, and retail type uses. And as a result of that, we developed the site plans so that the traffic volumes that could be experienced at the site could be easily accommodated through the curb cuts and access points onto both Bourbon Street and Lowell Street. It was made very clear during the planning process, and I don't think anyone would disagree with me, that Lowell Street is a very congested roadway system. There has been some significant problems with left turn movements before the improvements exiting out onto Lowell Street to head eastbound, as it was a high problematic traffic accident area. So, as part of our process, we have, you know, designed to have patrons and customers exit onto Bourbon Street if they can take the left at the light in order to proceed eastbound. As far as exiting the drive-through window, I understand your concern that you had. It was the same current concern that the safety officer had, and Council Sassla had when I met with him at the site to review this whole thing. In a collaboration effort, we believe that, you know, based on the sightlines, based on the plan, the sightline shown on SP1, and the fact that we're introducing a flashing beacon at the corner of the building, we believe that we're pretty much taking care of those potential conflicts that may occur with people exiting the site onto Bourbon Street versus the people exiting the drive-through window. There will be a loop detector. As you exit the window, there'll be a loop detector system that is saw-cut into the pavement that will trigger the flashing stoplight to acknowledge people coming heading towards Bourbon Street, Bourbon Street to exit, to slow down and to stop. It's just another layer of safety that was added on top of the stop sign installation. And regarding, as you exit, I think it was the exiting piece is a little bit of a pinch point. Yes, again, that was done, that was done for this, for the sake of maximizing and forcing, the goal was really to force the cars to take the right onto Bourbon Street. And that rear access drive between the rear of the building and Bourbon Street is really intended to be used only for patrons who utilize the drive-through window and deliveries. The basic traffic volume of the center has no reason to be back there if they're not going to utilize the drive-through. It will be in the main body of the parking lot, which is clearly defined and directs traffic to the, to one of the three curb cuts. So, I'm thinking, you know, I'm pretty comfortable in saying that I think the potential traffic conflicts should be really minimized unless something crazy is going on that we can anticipate. We also have, for the pedestrian safety, we also have a dedicated sidewalk system that's in place that keeps them away from the vehicles exiting the window in order to exit onto Bourbon Street. So, you know, with that, I think that after multiple meetings with the safety officer, I think we have come up with a good plan that kind of addresses those needs, to those concerns.
Through the chair.
Councilor Schreist.
Thank you, and that's great information. The, when you did the study, when you talk about the traffic study, was the thought of having a drive-through there, drive-through window there when you did that study?
I believe, yes, and it wasn't for, it was thought of because at the time, CVS was investigating the feasibility of installing a drive-through. As you know, you know, a modern CVS today is a freestanding building that has a drive-through window component. We planned or anticipated that CVS may want to construct a drive-through window at this location, so it's kind of warped into the overall traffic numbers that we looked at and the assessment that we looked at in the initial permitting phase of the project.
Through the chair again, if I could ask another question. How many cars do you anticipate participating in the drive-through window per day or two hours?
Well, good question. I have to be totally honest with you, I am not familiar with the Crack Kitchen operation. I think what is advantage, what their advantage to this site is, is that typically this is an entertainment, it's heavily entertainment within the game, and typically, they don't open until after lunch, and CVS is open, obviously, in the morning, but I think we could all agree that the traffic that they're generating for the CVS users is pretty low, so the big, the big traffic user of the property is In the Game. I would tend to think that, you know, early on, if this is any new typical use or tenant that comes to a shopping center that's new to the area, would probably have a heavy upfront use, and then over time, as people get used to it and whatnot, it kind of eases off. But I would believe that the peak time for the Crack Kitchen, as was alluded to before, since it's predominantly a breakfast lunch, my guess is the breakfast time, which would be seven to nine, would be the, would be the most utilized of the drive-through window. And I just can't, I cannot envision, I don't know how many cars would be in queue, but I can't envision a 15-pire lane, I just don't think people would wait that long, and they would just buy, if it was that long, they would just utilize the bypass lane and exit to that point. I would suspect that the lunchtime crowd would be a little less because people are already at work.
Sure, and that's what makes me, that pension area there makes me worried about people coming out of their lane and saying, "I'm not waiting no longer," and usually they're, they're a little, they're a little heavy on the gas at that point.
And to your point, this also acts the traffic deterrent, because if it was open, it'd be a free-for-all to the first, first one at the it'd be a free-for-all to the first, first one at the intersection, and then they had a right or even a left to, to circle around the center, and then speed would be an issue. This kind of introduces a little bit of a traffic calming measure to ensure that people are slow and they're paying, and they're attentive to how they're navigating through, through that area of the site.
Thank you. And in the game, they'll be open early on Saturdays and Sundays, correct? They're open in the morning, I'm assuming, for birthday parties and things of that? I can't imagine they're not going to be open earlier in the Saturday and Sunday. Anyways, but did you want to address the other question I had about the deliveries?
Yeah, with respect to deliveries, again, based on their operation, they open to the public around six. So what they've, what they have advised me is that their other location is, is that the delivery trucks, the box truck comes and drops the food products, the dairy and whatnot, in a plastic crate at the back door. And there is someone that is working that, that opens up the rear door and is brought in, and the delivery truck goes away. So it's going to, the plan is to have those deliveries done in that, you know, five o'clock in the morning to 6:00 a.m. right before opening window is to, and they schedule their deliveries to happen in that, in that timeframe.
And as I, I indicate, and I may be incorrect, and I hate to have the presentation presented to us that in a fashion that is not allowed, because I just don't, I'm not sure if deliveries are allowed that early in the morning. I, I work in food, so I know how early vendors do show up to your door to deliver. And it becomes sometimes a nuisance. And with the, the dumpster, the way it's positioned, it would have to become, I'm imagining it would have to come out in the road to be picked up and dumped, because there's, there is no way a truck is going to be able to pick up that dumpster and dump it in its truck the way it's positioned.
That is correct. That dumpster location is intended to be a common area for all the tenants. So the plan is to have, if you envision, it's like a two, it's a two-cubic yard dumpster that's on wheels, and there'd be a number of them in that fenced-in-closed dumpster area. And when they are full, the waste management people would roll them out into the, roll them out into, into the drive aisle, empty them, and then they'd be rolled back into, into the enclosure area, and off he goes. And that is something, obviously, we're sensitive to, to our butters and residents that are in close proximity. We can, we can schedule those, so it's, it's not intrusive to any of, any of your abutted properties.
Yes, I would ask for that, because hearing a dumpster getting dumped at early in the mornings, that noise just travels like you wouldn't believe, and have many issues already with that. So if you would, please, sir, make sure that is set up, that it's not dumped early in the morning when there's no traffic there. You may have to do it in the middle of the afternoon.
Yes, understood.
Thank you, Counselor Sheres. Counselor Manny Martin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This was a great presentation. I'm not a fan of drive-throughs, which is why several months ago Counsel Sasslaw brought me out for a drive-by to show me where this drive-through was and its layout. And at that time, again, this was several months ago, I thought it was the craziest thing I ever saw. And I thought there were a lot of safety concerns, and I had pointed them all out. And you've addressed them all, much like Counsel Turco has pointed out. You have stop signs where you need stop signs. You put in bump outs to assist with pedestrian viewpoint and safety. And you have the flashing safety sign as well, caution. And I really don't see where pedestrians are going to be an issue here at this location at this point. So I'm sold. And this, the amount of detail and effort and communication and collaboration with the safety officer, with Captain Richards and the, and the Ward Counselor, has really been phenomenal. And this drive-through, to me, should really be an example moving forward of what drive-throughs should look like. And I'll probably be more supportive of future drive-throughs if they follow this schematic. So I'm sold. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Manny Martin.
I'm, Chairman, I know you hate when I do that. I'm sorry.
Counselor, go ahead.
Is Mr. Yaba still up there? Is he, I don't see him on the screen. Is he still present? The only thing I wanted to mention, too, was there was a lot of talk about landscaping. The one thing that I did notice, and I have noticed up there, is that the landscaping on the Bourbon Street side is really lacking and could use some attention. So if Mr. Yaba is still on the line, I know it's been a bad year, and you've been working at this for several years, as Counsel Sasslaw has pointed out. But that side of Bourbon Street really could use some attention in that area. A beautiful building has just been put up with, and they put a lot of attention into landscaping on Bourbon Street. And I'm hoping that that continues. So if you could take a look at that project and what they've done, and maybe mirror it or kind of follow their lead, I'm sure that the folks on Bourbon Street and the city in that area will appreciate that attention. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Manny Martin. Counselor Gould.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm not opposed to this, but I do follow Counselor Sheres' suggestion that there's going to be an awful lot of stuff going on at a certain time of day that's going to interrupt that, that flow of the drive-through. Mr. Dundon, if you would, please, could, could you please reiterate what you expect for deliveries and what time of day you think they're going to come?
Yes, the deliveries are anticipated to be in the morning before opening. So I'm estimating around between five, five and six o'clock in the morning, these deliveries would be occurring. There would be a food item delivery that would occur twice a week.
What, what, I'm sorry? I'm sorry.
Food item, food item.
Food item, okay.
Food-related, food-related deliveries, there'll be two, twice a week. Bread would be delivered every day. And dairy and produce would be delivered four times a week. And there would be one linen pickup and drop-off done a week as well. So essentially, you'll have a delivery at the place once a day.
Okay. I, I find it hard to believe that you're going to be able to get all of those twice a week, four times a week, once a week, every day, everything done by six o'clock. And I'm curious as to what our ordinance is for time of deliveries allowed, but I'm sure Counselor Sasslaw will work that out. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Gould. Counselor Rosignol.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to commend you first at the presentation. It is thorough. It is informative. And so I want to start by thanking you. I know this area pretty well, and I've driven it a couple of times, and I do have a number of questions and concerns. My first question I have is, the current place where the window is for the drive-through, is that going to be the window in the future?
I don't follow the, are you talking about the existing knockout in the building?
Correct. Correct.
No.
So will that, I'm sorry, just for clarification. So it'll be moved back into the building further, so more or less between door number 31 and 33, correct?
I do not know the door, I don't, I do not know the door numbers, but yes, it's going to be moved further away from the corner of the building that is closest to the, in the game, building.
Perfect, thank you. Because where the window is currently, there is no way you could actually get your drive-through stop. And with the curb cutout, there was just no way. So thank you for that clarification. My second question is the CVS receiving door. If you look at the map that we have, so if you picture an 18-wheeler dropping off product to CVS, there is no way for any vehicle to get by in order to access the drive-through. So are you going to be coordinating with CVS to make sure that their deliveries aren't going to literally be a roadblock to this drive-through?
Yes. Mr. Yaba, the owner of the property, will be working, will coordinate with the CVS operational folks should that a condition occur. It won't be me personally. It would be Al who manages and owns the property.
All right, could you say that last piece again?
Yes, it will not, I, it won't be me that'll be managing that. If this conflict occurs, Al, who owns the property, Al Yaba owns the property, will resolve that issue. I'm, I'm the engineer, so I don't, I don't have the ability to, to manage the conflict. It would need to come from the property owner to the tenant.
That's right. Brian, if I may, yes, I finally figured out how to unmute. What we have already done is to, is to have CVS run their trucks parallel with the elevation of the building. So in the past, those trucks would come in and be perpendicular, they would block off all access to the rear of the stores. And now it's running alongside the building and backing up into the loading dock. But in addition to that, as Brian has said, you know, we will be coordinating the deliveries of the CVS truck. All of the other trucks that service the CVS building that are not the CVS deliveries come in through the front door.
So.
So they'll come in, run parallel to the front of CVS and come in through the front door. So those CVS trucks that come in are the only ones using that loading dock. And they come in twice a week.
So they're going to be parallel to the side of the building, but if you look at where the parking spaces are that you have now along that side, that's still going to be a choke point with an 18-wheeler against the building and cars parked in those parking spots where it says number six.
Correct. So those, those deliveries generally come in before CVS opens at eight on this site. And, and they have been, they're pretty good about not having those parked for any length of time. They offload the trucks, and they're, and they leave the site. So we think it's a manageable situation, and certainly doesn't help us to create a drive-through that gets blocked off. That's not, that's not our intent.
Thank you. Just for the council's edification, if they haven't been there, if you look at VF number one, where it shows the menu board, and it shows gray pillars, those gray pillars are protecting gas, which goes into each business. So I just, just so that the council is aware, because that's not shown on this map.
Those are existing billiards, correct?
Correct. I just wanted the council to be aware of that, just because it looks fantastic. But there is a little bit more to this situation than what is laid out, and, and gas lines being one of them. To Counselor Sheres' point, as far as a choke point at the end of the exit, if you look at where the car is stopped on the plan, and you look at the cone shape, which is their sightline, I drove it today as well as another day, and that sightline is actually inaccurate. If you move that vehicle forward about three feet, then you can actually see where the stop line is, just for the council's edification. So, and I'm going by what is painted there, which, if you look at late communication, I'm sorry, I believe it was one, which had the landscaping and the painting. I was going by the painted lines that are currently there. And it is extremely difficult sightline to see around the building and actually see the stop line exiting the premises. And I do have concerns about that area, even though it's 10 and 12 feet, that, it is a very narrow choke point. And one last question slash concern I have, and actually Counselor Sasslaw made it and raised it. As I was driving this area both times, there were employees from the tenants outside smoking. So that is a safety concern. If you have already current tenants using the back property, which it technically is, as their smoking area, obviously, we don't want them smoking in the front, so they, they need someplace to go and have a cigarette, because it's obviously not allowed in the premises. That's not addressed anywhere in here. So those are my concerns. Those are my thoughts, and I appreciate your time, and thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Rosignol. Counselor McGinn.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Dundon, you've gotten positive feedback as far as the thoroughness of the, not only your presentation, but the application. I would just add my, my positive feedback on that as well. It's tremendous. Actually, if you look at Section 12A of our application, it specifies that your description is supposed to be 300 words or less. And I'm not sure we have had anybody ever push that limit before, and I'm looking to the clerk here, but you're never going to be criticized for me, from me, for a thorough application, so thank you. You've answered a number of questions from Counselor Sheres and Gould and Rosignol about deliveries. I just, what I, I mean, I read in your narrative, I heard tonight about deliveries, and I heard what was just said about CVS. The only question I still have about deliveries is, is the other tenants in that, in that section of the building. Those rear doors, I would imagine, are to support their deliveries as well. So you've kind of talked about the timing of deliveries for the crack kitchen operation, but there's, it looks like five other tenants that would have rear doors there that I would assume would support deliveries for those businesses. And, you know, so if there's cars lined up in a, in a drive-through, and so that just leaves, I think you're referring to it as a bypass lane, how are those deliveries going to be coordinated? What's, what's the plan there? And I guess that would be directed to either, I guess that it would more appropriately be directed to Mr. Yaba.
Yes, I'd be happy to answer that. We've had a lot of discussion about deliveries. And what we are finding, generally speaking, for the rest of those tenants in that strip, they're generally going to be personal services and other lighter type operations, where deliveries would come in through the front door, not through the back. So those doors would really be functioning as a rear egress. It just so happens that Crack Kitchen believes that, you know, they, they need to be close to the dumpsters for their, their trash. They also need to have deliveries come in by two-wheeler. And so that's really why we believe they'll be the only business that'll be utilizing that, that lane for deliveries at all.
Thank you, Mr. Yaba. So is, is, is that like, are you making that a function of your leases with the, with the other tenants in the building, that they're not using that rear door for deliveries?
Well, we'll, we'll listen to anybody's request for deliveries, but those tenants that we are looking to put into the space, and we are negotiating with, if they're receiving deliveries at all, it's sometimes through FedEx, through the front door, and/or a box truck, which again is delivered by the, by, by front door. We do not, we have not made it a condition of the lease, but it's one of those things that we discuss when we do our leasing with the tenants, because, you know, we want to make sure that they're not overloading that area as well. But, you know, a, a personal trainer, a barber, those types of operations aren't going to have rear deliveries. And one, one more comment I'd like to circle back to on smokers. You know, we've spent money to create smoking and employee areas inside the premises, and that's where they need to go. So we've heard you clearly, we're going to, we're going to be talking with our tenants to make sure that their employees stay in the building if they're going to smoke in those employee areas.
Thank you, Mr. Yaba. Thank you, Mr. Dundon. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor McGinn. Counselor Meltel.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I was going to wait until the next meeting, but might as well get it out now. I, I worked at this location before this was demolished and rebuilt. I worked at this location before this was demolished and rebuilt at the Sovereign Bank in 2011, 2012, and I can tell you, if you wanted to see a dangerous situation, you should have seen a Saturday morning when Bonkers was having all their parties and everything else was going on, people going for haircuts, stopping at the CVS, and then going to the Jade. So there's, what's there now is infinitely better than what was there before. So I think that's the starting point for all of this. When it comes to deliver, you know, I hear all the comments about the specific business operations, but it really wouldn't be in the economic interest of the property owner if he was to advocate for deliveries to occur at the block, the drive-through window that we're trying to approve tonight. So I would trust that it's in everybody's interest to work that out. You know, I see every day a poor, not a great organized drive-through on Washington Street, you know, and this, the investment, the time, and everything that's gone into this particular one, I think is going to negate many of the issues that you see at other drive-throughs that we've approved. So just on effort alone, I appreciate that. I think some great points have been brought up tonight. I assume that those will be brought back and handled as best as they can. But, you know, I remember what this was like, and it was not good. So today, what we're seeing is a much better area. It's a, I'm glad to see that there's, by the way, commercial real estate owners, they're very rarely talking about new tenants right now, so it's good to see that somebody wants to go into this location. So I plan on supporting it when it comes up next week, and I congratulate the engineer with his presentation and the owner of the property. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Melville. Any further comments or questions from fellow councils? Councilor Saslaw?
Thank you, Council President, and I sincerely appreciate all the council's input. That's what I was hoping to have happen, because I'm just one set of eyeballs, and I think it's important. I just want to address a couple of issues that were brought up. Regarding the drive-through, actually, let me back up, regarding snow removal, I think Mr. Yaba will be the first one to tell you that when we had the snowstorms, I was very, very clear to Mr. Yaba that that new exit to go east needs to be clear, and whoever he hired, they needed to understand that the exit going west was not a problem, and he understood that, because that's a brand-new exit point for people to leave that plaza. That's where the two-stop signs are, and, you know, right when you come out of the drive-through. So I'm confident that he heard my message, and whoever he hires to continue to do his snow removal will do that and do that properly, understanding the critical nature of that particular intersection. I think a great analogy to use for this proposal is the walls of Deco Plaza, and there's another coffee shop there, and I don't know if people actually really realize, I've heard the comments about the tightness, I do believe that there won't be really two rows of traffic going behind the building as that often, it certainly can happen, and that's why they're there. But actually, if you go behind walls of Deco Plaza to go to Perfecto's, there's a row of parked cars, and there's the row for the drive-through. You can't get through. Stinks when you're 30 cars deep and all you wanted was a muffin. But, so, I appreciate the concern, but I think that this layout is superior to that layout, and that's okay. I just think it's a point of reference that sometimes we forget. What I also think is the other coffee shop. We don't need to discuss that, we know how that backs up on the Lowell Street. So my hope is maybe this third location might alleviate some of those other issues. Maybe not, but as I said, I really think that maybe that certainly could happen. I think one of the things that myself and Counselor Shurress certainly will agree upon, we've got to get those no-parking signs up on Bourbon Street, so that, you know, we know that sometimes buses are there in the morning. I don't know how prevalent it's been because of the pandemic, but I know in the past we both discussed the fact that, especially now with this amount of increase of traffic going on there. The hours of operation, I certainly will look into the deliveries, as has been brought up, I know Mr. Yaba will. I would say, the one thing that I do like about the hours of operation is that if you look at this, Monday through Friday, Monday through Saturday, they close at 4:00. Maybe they're successful and they come back, but as we sit here today, it's at 4:00 PM. So they certainly can get a late delivery and it's still light out, maybe the winter not as light. But I would also ask Mr. Yaba, if you have success and things are, you know, you need deliveries every day, is it not crazy to think that maybe, if you look on one of the drawings, there's a number 12, it's right in front of cracked, and if you had to have a delivery in those two or three spots, and right next door, by the way, is a salon and a barber, which I don't think those open until probably maybe eight, I could be wrong, but if you had to either use that, which once again, you probably don't want to because you don't want to take up the parking spaces, but for the deliveries, you could either do it in spot 12 or go, for lack of a better word, across the street, and if the truck is going to come into the two wheels, is that something that you're open to if you need to do that based upon some of the time constraints on the local residences?
Yes.
Thank you.
I think that, I think that we're, not only are we open to that, but if we have to go in that direction, we would probably have that serve also as a pickup drop-off, you know, dedicated parking space as well.
Okay, great. And also, just to Counselor Rosengal, that was regarding the placement of the drive-through window, we actually, the first time I went out there, I said, "It's just too close," and that's when we got into the whole discussion of the curb cut, to really force that traffic over. And so I know, I saw the window, and I don't know what it looks like today, I'm looking more at the ground and the pink and the colors, but Mr. Yaba understood that right away, that we needed to address that, to force that traffic over to the right. So I think I've covered all, as I said, I really appreciate everyone's input, I'm sure we'll come back and have some clarification, and as Counselor Melville alluded to, I think that, you know, the whole CVS situation, you know, Mr. Yaba has two tenants that he has to please, and I think with the CVS, and I don't know if I've ever actually seen those spaces ever occupied, quite frankly, on the front, but hopefully they will be, and they will be, but, and he did move, if you actually go by the plaza today, Mr. Yaba, he is actually, where the dumpster is today will not be where it is tomorrow, and that's, we were just waiting to move that and to build a fence, and we've discussed that. But thank you for your time, and if no one, Mr. President, if you'd like me, I could recess, if you want to go around one more time, how I'd like to handle it.
Thank you, Counselor Saslaw. Any Counselor Rosengal?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just on that last statement, as far as the dumpster goes, through you to Counselor Saslaw, are you talking about the one out front near the CVS?
That is correct. Right where it is now, it's almost, it's almost like parallel to Lowell Street, and I had discussed that with him, and he had explained to me that when you see the site plan, I'd be able to see, because I have been on him to be, to put a fence around it, quite frankly, and he asked me to just work with this plan, and it made sense, and you can see, they've moved it to parking space six, and it will be fully enclosed like all dumpsters should be.
For the clarification.
Any further discussion? Counselor Saslaw, now entertain a motion to recess the hearing.
Thank you, Council President. I'd like to make a motion to recess the public hearing for 535 Lowell Street Peabody LLC to Thursday, April 8th.
You've heard the motion from Counselor Saslaw. Any discussion? Hearing non-rolled call vote, please.
Counselors Gould?
Yes.
Manning Martin?
Yes.
Saslaw?
Yes.
Welton?
Yes.
Charis?
Yes.
McGinn?
Yes.
Mazzullis?
Yes.
Turco?
Yes.
Rosengal?
Yes.
Melville?
Yes.
O'Neill?
Yes.
Motion carries 11 to 0.
Thank you, Mr. Yaba, Mr. Dundon. We'll see you in a few weeks.
Thank you all.
We'll now move to reports of committee. The Legal Affairs Committee met tonight. Council Chairman Melville, please.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. The Legal Affairs Subcommittee met this evening. We had all committee members and counselors available and participating, along with the mayor, Dan Dusset, the purchasing agent, and Jared Hockman, who runs the No Child Goes Hungry program. We had a good discussion about surplus property and how that gets worked out within the mayor's office and the purchasing agent. We had a brief description of what the No Child Goes Hungry program will do with the surplus van that they receive, and a motion was made and passed unanimously. I'm prepared to make that motion. So the motion was following the mayor's recommendation, with all papers being in order to donate a vehicle, a vehicle to, a surplus vehicle, to No Child Goes Hungry and Peabody, and Counselor Welton's recommendation to include the 501(c)(3) exemption. So moved.
You've heard the motion from Legal Affairs Committee Chairman Melville. Any discussion? Hearing non-rolled call vote, please. Counselor Welton?
Yeah, just a point of clarification, so the document would be a 501(c)(3) tax exemption status form through the IRS. Just, again, standard for all nonprofit organizations.
Thank you, Counselor Welton. On the motion, roll call vote, please.
Counselors Gould?
Yes.
Manning Martin?
Yes.
Saslaw?
Yes.
Welton?
Yes.
Charis?
Yes.
McGinn?
Yes.
Mazzullis?
Yes.
Turco?
Yes.
Rosengal?
Yes.
Melville?
Yes.
O'Neill?
Yes.
Motion carries 11 to 0.
That was all we discussed this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman Melville. We'll now move to the reports of the Committee of the Whole. Tonight, we met this evening with all councilors present, along with Mayor Betancourt. We started a discussion of future in-person attendance by the general public at city council meetings. The mayor spoke regarding what is going to be a greater public access for City Hall and talking about having security to, you know, a greeter for public who comes to City Hall to do business at any of the departments, and have security so that mask-wearing and safety protocols are taken. So that's expected to be, I believe, April 7th, when that's going to kick in, if you will. We covered a lot of different topics, just in terms of, you know, how we can bring the public back to our meetings in a safe way, along with other attendees that'll be here, and we've got a lot more work to do in just terms of fleshing out the Health Department recommendations, and also, the council's brought up some good points in terms of, you know, scheduling, when we want to do that, but certainly there's a willingness to continue to work on this, to figure out how to get our next step, to bring the public back to City Hall for public hearings and meetings, and we voted to remain, keep this in committee, so this is a report of progress, but I would ask if someone could make a motion to accept late communication number four that was discussed in that Committee of the Whole.
So moved.
Thank you. You've heard the motion. Any further discussion? Hearing non-rolled call vote, please.
Counselors Gould?
Yes.
Manning Martin?
Yes.
Saslaw?
Yes.
Welton?
Yes.
Charis?
Yes.
McGinn?
Yes.
Mazzullis?
Yes.
Turco?
Yes.
Rosengal?
Yes.
Melville?
Yes.
O'Neill?
Yes.
Motion carries 11 to 0.
Thank you. We'll now move to motions, orders, and resolutions. Counselor Gould?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to make a co-motion with yourself, Counselor O'Neill, to have the sidewalk repaired at 7th Sophie Road. So moved.
You've heard the motion by Counselor Gould. Any discussion? Hearing non-rolled call vote, please.
Counselors Gould?
Yes.
Manning Martin?
Yes.
Saslaw?
Yes.
Welton?
Yes.
Charis?
Yes.
McGinn?
Yes.
Mazzullis?
Yes.
Turco?
Yes.
Rosengal?
Yes.
Melville?
Yes.
O'Neill?
Yes.
Motion carries 11 to 0.
Counselor Gould?
No further motions, Mr. President. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Gould. Counselor Manning Martin?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Under suspension of the rules, motion to receive Item 7B, 7C, and 7D, all transfers of funds and refer to finance. So moved.
You've heard the motion by Counselor Manning Martin. Any discussion? Hearing non-rolled call vote, please.
Counselors Gould?
Yes.
Manning Martin?
Yes.
Saslaw?
Yes.
Welton?
Yes.
Charis?
Yes.
McGinn?
Yes.
Mazzullis?
Yes.
Turco?
Yes.
Rosengal?
Yes.
Melville?
Yes.
O'Neill?
Yes.
Motion carries 11 to 0.
Counselor Manning Martin?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Under suspension of the rules, motion to receive Item 7E, request for proposals for 212 and 16 Washington Street and refer to legal affairs. So moved.
You've heard the motion from Counselor Manning Martin. Any discussion? Hearing non-rolled call vote, please.
Counselors Gould?
Yes.
Manning Martin?
Yes.
Saslaw?
Yes.
Welton?
Yes.
Charis?
Yes.
McGinn?
Yes.
Mazzullis?
Yes.
Turco?
Yes.
Rosengal?
Yes.
Melville?
Yes.
O'Neill?
Yes.
Motion carries 11 to 0.
Counselor Manning Martin?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Under suspension of the rules, motion to receive Item 8B, an application to purchase city-owned land at 0 Downing Road and refer to legal affairs. So moved.
You've heard the motion by Counselor Manning Martin. Any discussion? Counselor Melville?
Through you, Mr. President, to Counselor Manning Martin, can you just amend that, Counselor Manning Martin, to include, refer to legal affairs and community development for review?
Sure. So amended. So moved.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Melville. Thank you, Counselor Manning Martin. You've heard the amended motion. Any further discussion? Hearing non-rolled call vote, please.
Counselors Gould?
Yes.
Manning Martin?
Yes.
Saslaw?
Yes.
Welton?
Yes.
Charis?
Yes.
McGinn?
Yes.
Mazzullis?
Yes.
Turco?
Yes.
Rosengal?
Yes.
Melville?
Yes.
O'Neill?
Yes.
Motion carries 11 to 0.
Counselor Manning Martin?
Mr. Chairman, under suspension of the rules, motion to receive Item 9A, a request for a banner by Peabody Youth Soccer Association. Motion approved. So moved.
You've heard the motion by Counselor Manning Martin. Any discussion? Hearing non-rolled call vote, please.
Counselors Gould?
Yes.
Manning Martin?
Yes.
Saslaw?
Yes.
Welton?
Yes.
Charis?
Yes.
McGinn?
Yes.
Mazzullis?
Yes.
Turco?
Yes.
Rosengal?
Yes.
Melville?
Yes.
O'Neill?
Yes.
Motion carries 11 to 0.
Counselor Manning Martin?
Mr. Chairman, and I would like to make a motion reflective of an article that was in an editorial, it was an editorial, actually, in the Boston Herald today, and it was talking about a bill by Representative Moran that has stalled out, but it is in committee, looking to get support of it, and it is an act requiring fingerprinting of TNC drivers. I don't know if my colleagues had a chance to review that, to see that editorial, but I don't know if my colleagues had a chance to review that, to see that editorial, but I do have a copy of it that'll enter into record for your review. And, um, and also a copy of the bill. It's number 1066. And again, it's an act requiring fingerprinting of TNC drivers. And TNC drivers are ride-hail drivers, Uber and Lyft. And the bill, over the past few years, the legislature was able to include background checks on these drivers. But for whatever reason, fingerprinting and checking them in the national database was rejected. And to me, that's just crazy. So I would like to, and I will enter into the record for your review, I'm hoping to get a letter from this council with unanimous support to support this bill, given that the increase in sexual assaults, rapes, and kidnapping, kidnapping over the past several years, they're all violent crimes against women that are, that are happening, involved with those ride, ride-hail driving vendors and agency. So what I'd like to do is make a motion to receive and refer to the full council this House Bill number 1066, an act requiring the fingerprinting of TNC drivers, as well as a copy, which I have, and I will enter into record with Allison, the editorial that gives a better description. I'll link the description of what it's all about. So with that, I will make a motion to receive those two items. So moved.
Thank you, Counselor Manny Martin. Just for good order, do you want to refer that matter to the Ad-Hoc Committee on Taxes, Licenses, and Rightschairs?
Uh, no. Thank you for asking. I would like it actually to be referred to unfinished business, to the next scheduled meeting. That way, we can pick it up. And after, my colleagues have reviewed it. If you agree, after reading the bill and the editorial, and do some research, if you support my motion to send a letter in support of this bill, that, that's what I hope to do. Thank you.
Okay. You've heard the motion from Counselor Manny Martin. Any further discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Counselors Gould.
On the motion, Mr. President. Sorry.
Counselor Gould, on the motion?
Yes, please. Counselor Manny Martin, how can you accelerate that to get, can you email us a copy of both the editorial and your proposed letter, please?
I'd be happy to do that, Counselor.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor Gould. Any further discussion? Counselor Welton.
Mr. President, through you to Counselor Manny Martin. Could you also perhaps send the language of the bill as well, so we have a chance to review? Thank you.
Yes, I have that here, and I'm going to include that. I've already entered that into, to record. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Welton. Any further discussion? Hearing done. Roll call vote, please.
Counselors Gould.
Yes.
Manny Martin.
Yes.
Sassla.
Yes.
Welton.
Yes.
Charis.
Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
Mazzulis.
Yes.
Turco.
Yes.
Rosignol.
Yes.
Melville.
Yes.
O'Neal.
Yes.
Motion carries 11 to 0.
Counselor Manny Martin.
That is all I have, Mr. Chairman. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor Manny Martin. Counselor Sassla.
Thank you, Counselor President. Under suspension of rules, motion to receive item 8A and set up a special permit hearing.
You've heard the motion from Counselor Sassla. Any discussion? Hearing done. Roll call vote, please.
Counselors Gould.
Yes.
Manny Martin.
Yes.
Sassla.
Yes.
Welton.
Yes.
Charis.
Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
Mazzulis.
Yes.
Turco.
Yes.
Rosignol.
Yes.
Melville.
Yes.
O'Neal.
Yes.
Motion carries 11 to 0.
Counselor Sassla.
Thank you, Counselor President. Under suspension of rules, motion to receive item 8K and set up a special permit hearing.
You've heard the motion from Counselor Sassla. Any discussion? Hearing done. Roll call vote, please.
Counselors Gould.
Yes.
Manny Martin.
Yes.
Sassla.
Yes.
Welton.
Yes.
Charis.
Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
Mazzulis.
Yes.
Turco.
Yes.
Rosignol.
Yes.
Melville.
Yes.
O'Neal.
Yes.
Motion carries 11 to 0.
Counselor Sassla.
Nothing further, Counselor President. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Sassla. Counselor Welton.
Thank you, Mr. President. A few motions this evening, so if you could just bear with me a moment. The first is, just to give a little bit of background to the council, I think everyone's aware of the Boulderwood development that's been under construction officially for the last few years. Construction has completed there, and as such, I'd like to make a co-motion with Counselor Turco. The first would be to move to amend under section 19-126 entitled "Obedience to Isolated Stop Signs of the Code of the City of PBD" by inserting the following intersections: Marshall Circle at Gedney Drive, Pazigo Circle at Gedney Drive, Canaxis Circle at Sitsunizo Drive, Viera Drive at Sitsinos Drive, Sunset Road at Viera Drive, Manuel Drive at Sitsinos Drive, Manuel Drive at Viera Drive, and advertised as read. So moved.
You've heard the motion. Any further discussion? Any discussion from councils? Counselor Sassla?
I will support the motion absolutely. I just had a question. Someone just was talking about the increase in housing. And could Counselor Turco or Counselor Welton tell me, so how many houses did they end up building up in Boulderwood? Someone asked, and I did not know. I figured one of you would probably know.
I'll defer to Counselor Turco if he has the exact number. I think, you know, there's definitely probably close to a couple hundred up there, but Counselor Turco, if you know definitive number better than I, please.
I don't have a definitive number. I just know that it was circa 150, about between 145 and 150.
So I rounded it up a little bit, but, yeah.
Thank you, Counselors Turco and Counselor Sassla. On the motion, Counselor McGinn.
Thank you, Mr. President. Through you to Counselor Welton. I'm assuming these are all just catching up the, what came out of the planning process, and this has been fully vetted with the police department and so forth, the, all these stop signs?
Correct. So there's no stop signs up there currently. So this is, the move to make the amendment for the ordinance would be to have these enforceable. And then the next motion that I am prepared to make is the actual install of those stop signs. But currently, all, the entirety of Boulderwood, with the exception of one intersection that Counselor Turco and I made a co-motion on a few weeks ago, is without stop signs. So this is sort of the follow-along to the completion of that project.
Thank you, Counselor Welton. Thank you, Mr. President. Any further discussion? You've heard the co-motion by Counselors Welton and Counselor Turco. Roll call vote, please.
Counselors Gould.
Yes.
Manny Martin.
Yes.
Welton.
Yes.
Charis.
Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
Mazzulis.
Yes.
Turco.
Yes.
Rosignol.
Yes.
Melville.
Yes.
O'Neal.
Yes.
Motion carries 11 to 0.
Counselor Welton.
Thank you, Mr. President. As a follow-up to that motion, I would like to make a motion to the Department of Public Services to install stop signs at the following locations: Marshall Circle at Gedney Drive, Pazigo Circle at Gedney Drive, Canaxis Circle at Sitsinos Drive, Viera Drive at Sitsinos Drive, Sunset Road at Viera Drive, Manuel Drive at Sitsino Drive, Manuel Drive at Viera Drive. So moved.
You've heard the motion by Counselor Welton. Any discussion? Counselor Manny Martin.
Thank you. And I'm sorry, the question was asked, but maybe I didn't understand the answer. I know you're, you're making the motion to have them enforceable, and now you're making the motion to have them installed, but what was the answer to? Has Captain Richards and the traffic enforcement reviewed this and agree with their installations at those locations?
Um, yes. So I've had an opportunity to speak with Sergeant Harkins regarding this motion and gave him the heads up and had a discussion with him that we would like to have the area have stop signs within those neighborhoods. And he's aware that we're making the motion and said, as, you know, moving forward, that I should make the motion so it's enforceable, and then, you know, we would have the stop signs installed through DPS.
Thank you. I just wanted to make sure that the police knew the actual locations and...
Yep.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing done. You've heard the motion, co-motion from Counselors Welton and Counselor Turco. Roll call vote.
Counselors Gould.
Yes.
Manny Martin.
Yes.
Sassla.
Yes.
Welton.
Yes.
Charis.
Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
Mazzulis.
Yes.
Turco.
Yes.
Rosignol.
Yes.
Melville.
Yes.
O'Neal.
Yes.
Motion carries 11 to 0.
Counselor Welton.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a point of information, a number of residents in Ward 1 have reached out regarding a request for crosswalks to be painted. I did follow up with Department of Public Services Director LaBosier and was able to confirm that crosswalk painting will occur later this spring. So just wanted to make that announcement to those folks who had reached out. The next, just a thank you to the PBD Fire Department. I'm sure many of you might be aware, a couple weeks ago, we had a pretty significant fire behind Spring Pond, which extended at one point from adjacent to the golf course, all the way over to, to Big Spring Pond. And the fire department was working very, very hard. It was a ridiculously cold day. So I just want to send a quick thank you to them for, for all of their hard work. And lastly, I just wanted to recognize Ward 1 resident and 8th grader at Higgins Middle School, Evan Bedard. Evan set up a food drive to support the Haven for Hunger. He did this prior to, prior to the holidays and was able to, to bring in about 100 pounds of food to be donated. He actually just hosted another one, because it was so successful, he hosted another one last weekend, and was able to, to generate 250 pounds of food to be donated to the Haven for Hunger. So pretty impressive for a young man, 13 years of age, to take this on himself, and just really a feel-good story about our residents in South PBD stepping up to support our other residents citywide. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Counselor Welton. And thank you for, I guess, for lack of a better phrase, complimenting our police and fire departments for the work they did, and also for that young man. That's great, great. Love to hear those types of stories. Thank you. Counselor Scherz.
Thank you, Counselor President. Under suspension of rules, I'd like to move to accept 7A recommendation to appoint Rita Marie Cavacchio to the Conservation Commission for a term of one year. So moved. Or does that have to go to the next meeting also?
It'd be a move... Apologize. The motion would be to receive and approve.
Thank you. So moved.
You've heard the motion from Counselor Scherz. Any discussion? Hearing done. Roll call vote, please.
Counselors Gould.
Yes.
Manny Martin.
Yes.
Sassla.
Yes.
Welton.
Yes.
Charis.
Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
Mazzulis.
Yes.
Turco.
Yes.
Rosignol.
Yes.
Melville.
Yes.
O'Neal.
Yes.
Motion carries 11 to 0.
And I'd like to congratulate Rita Marie. She has always continued to put her service within the city. So I just want to thank her and congratulate her. Under suspension of rules, I'd like to move to SDPW to install a sign, street sign, for the rare Felton Terrace. So moved.
You've heard the motion from Counselor Scherz. Any discussion? Hearing done. Roll call vote, please.
Counselors Gould.
Yes.
Manny Martin.
Yes.
Sassla.
Yes.
Welton.[1276.08] McGinn.
Yes.
Mazzulis.
Yes.
Turco.
Yes.
Rozignol.
Yes.
Melville.
I apologize. Is this a stop sign? Oh, okay. Yes.
O'Neil.
Yes.
Motion carries 11 to 0.
Councilor Charis.
Thank you, Council President. I'd like to, I'll make a co-motion with Councilor Craig Welton for bringing it to my attention with the PBD Little League. They have asked, and I will support this, to a temporary closure on James Street at the basketball court to the Fork Road and James Street behind the backstop. This is in, allowed the Little League field right behind, in James Street, for people to be able to stand and be safe distance COVID. This again kind of follows up from last year. This is for 2021, and the reasoning why is that the, because of COVID and the rules, the players have to stay six feet apart and they must stand on the visitor's side behind the dugout, and that's physically on James Street. So, at a designated time, 30 minutes prior to the games, and it'd be a designated schedule that it would forward to the police and would like their support on this, to conduct this for this season. The Little League would like to put cones or a banner of closure. All expenses will be paid by the PBD Little League to what the police department is suggesting, and again, this is to keep the families and players safe, obviously, during the time of the baseball games. I would forward, I have not received the schedule as yet. This is coming from a request from the President, Christie Delareto, for this, for this action to be taken. Again, this is, it's kind of a no-brainer. You can't have the players standing out in the street and if cars going by. Now, there's a very limited amount of cars that will cut through, through the times of the games, but this will be posted, gone, all be vetted through the police department, publicized, again, at the cost of the Little League. So, I hope that wasn't too long, but so moved.
Councilor Scherz, the clerk had a question regarding the publication of publicizing it. Was that part of the motion also? And just to clarify, was this done last year? Just to, just for clarification?
Yes, this was done last year. I think Chief Police Griffin had taken a role of instituting this as a request that came in last minute, unfortunately, because it was all last minute, if you remember with the timing of COVID. So, if it needs to be publicized, and if the police chief asks for to do that, it will be publicized, and again, at the cost of the cost of the, to the Little League, and that would be on signage and cones.
Thank you for that clarification. You've heard the motion from Councilor Scherz. Any discussion? Councilor Welton. It was actually a co-motion from Councilor Welton and Councilor Scherz.
Thank you, Mr. President. And just to give a small bit of background, Councilor Scherz was, did a great job with recapping what happened last year and what the league is looking for this year. Just to kind of underscore, the regulations dictate that the kids can't be any closer than six feet, so it really does push them out on the street. So, it's, there's really no other place for, for the six feet to be, you know, kind of realized. So, last year, I actually had, had reached out to Councilor Scherz and the police chief, and it was, as he mentioned, it was very, very last minute in order to accommodate this, once we realized it was a safety issue, and it made a huge difference. There were zero COVID cases last year in PBD Little League, and I honestly attribute that a lot to the spacing that was allowed by shutting down the street. So, this year, I wanted to be more proactive, encourage Christie Delareto, the president, to reach out to, to Councilor Scherz to more formally request this and give neighbors a heads up ahead of time.
Thank you, Councilor Welton. You've heard the co-motion from Councilors Welton and Councilor Scherz. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call vote, please.
Councilors Gould.
Yes.
Manning Martin.
Yes.
Welton.
Yes.
Charis.
Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
Mazzulis.
Yes.
Turco.
Yes.
Rozignol.
Yes.
Melville.
Yes.
O'Neil.
Yes.
Motion carries 11 to 0.
Councilor Charis.
That's all, Council President. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Charis. Councilor McGinn.
Thank you, Mr. President. Under suspension of the rules, move to receive item 8C and set up a public hearing. So moved.
You've heard the motion from Councilor McGinn. Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call vote, please.
Councilors Gould.
Yes.
Manning Martin. Sasla.
Yes.
Welton. Charis. McGinn.
Yes.
Mazzulis.
Yes.
Turco. Rozignol.
Yes.
Melville.
Yes.
O'Neil.
Yes.
Motion carries 11 to 0.
Councilor McGinn.
Thank you, Mr. President. Under suspension of the rules, move to receive, it's a co-motion with Councilor Gould, item 8H, and on the motion, if we could ask Councilor Gould to comment, please?
Thank you, Councilor McGinn. Through you, Mr. President. Thank you, Councilor McGinn. As everybody remembers, and it seems like just yesterday, the school community in PBD lost three people within a matter of two weeks. Three very affectionate people, and Jason Frichette, Superintendent Cara Murtagh, and Judy May, Vice Principal Judy May, they're all were taken too quickly from us, and there's been a committee set up by the school department, and it's chaired by Maria Champagny, members of Heidi Mason, Bradley Tatten, and Doctor and Joan Kerbel, and they've formed a healing garden committee, and they're gonna, we're building a healing garden up at Brooksby Farm, soon to be completed, hopefully about two months away from completion, but it's gonna be a, a nice place to go and sit and relax and remember those that have gone before us, particularly those three individuals that were taken tragically from us. So, there is a form in your paper, paperwork, if anyone would like to buy a brick. We've extended the deadline for two more weeks, so there's plenty of opportunity. This will help pay for the maintenance of the garden. We were fortunate to have the CPC fund us in the amount of $90,000 to build a top-quality product for us, and, but we would love to see if anybody would please consider getting a brick engraved in memory of the three folks that passed away. Any other questions, I'll be glad to answer them, if you know how to reach me. But thank you, Councilor McGinn. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Gould. You've heard the co-motion from Councilors McGinn and Councilor Gould to receive item 8, 8H regarding the healing guarding, healing garden at Brooksby Farm. Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call vote, please.
Councilors Gould.
Yes.
Manning Martin.
Yes.
Welton.
Yes.
Charis.
Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
Mazzulis.
Yes.
Turco.
Yes.
Rozignol.
Yes.
Melville.
Yes.
O'Neil.
Yes.
Motion carries 11 to 0.
Councilor McGinn.
Thank you, Mr. President. No further motions.
Thank you, Councilor McGinn. Councilor Mazzulis.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to, under suspension of the rules, I'd like to go to item 9B. I'd like to make a motion to receive and set up a public hearing. So moved.
You've heard the motion from Councilor Mazzulis. Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call vote, please.
Councilors Gould.
Yes.
Manning Martin. Sasla.
Yes.
Welton.
Yes.
Charis.
Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
Mazzulis.
Yes.
Turco.
Yes.
Rozignol.
Yes.
Melville.
Yes.
O'Neil.
Yes.
Motion carries 11 to 0.
Councilor Mazzulis.
Thank you. Also, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to rescind a handicap parking sign in front of Four Walker Road. So moved, Mr. Chairman.
You've heard the motion from Councilor Mazzulis. Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call vote, please.
Councilors Gould.
Yes.
Manning Martin. Sasla.
Yes.
Welton. Charis.
Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
Mazzulis.
Yes.
Turco.
Yes.
Rozignol.
Yes.
Melville.
Yes.
O'Neil.
Yes.
Motion carries 11 to 0.
Councilor Mazzulis.
I have no further motions. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Councilor Mazzulis. Councilor Turco.
Thank you, Mr. President. Under suspension of the rules, move to receive items A, D, E, and F, and G from the Director of Public Services, Mr. La Bossier.
You've heard the motion from Councilor Turco. Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call vote, please.
Councilors Gould.
Yes.
Manning Martin. Sasla.
Yes.
Welton.
Yes.
Charis.
Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
Mazzulis. Turco.
Yes.
Rozignol.
Yes.
Melville.
Yes.
O'Neil.
Yes.
Motion carries 11 to 0.
Councilor Turco.
Thank you, Mr. President. This past Sunday, I believe it was, yes, I had the opportunity to walk most of Linfield Street from Quail Road down to Summit Street with Stuart Lazarus from the Conservation Commission, and essentially what Stuart was looking for and what I was looking for is choke points in Goldwath Brook, Greg's Pond, Cedar Pond, and some of the wetlands behind Quail Road, and there were numerous. So, what I'd like to do is, is set up a Public Services Subcommittee, and I will provide a list to the clerk of some residents, at least in that general area, that have concerns regarding those choke points, and also to invite Mr. Lazarus and Ms. Del Negro from, she was also very helpful with some past information about the cleaning of the brook, which I guess hasn't taken place in roughly 20, 20 years. And I'd like to set up that, so I'm gonna make the motion to set up the Public Services Subcommittee meeting somewhere about a month out, Allison, if you don't mind, because I want to give other councilors the opportunity to add other brooks and streams that may need to be added to this. It may be a citywide issue, so other ward councilors, you know, if there's any areas you are concerned about, you can add that to the meeting agenda. So, so moved.
Thank you, Councilor Turco. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call vote, please.
Councilors Gould.
Yes.
Manning Martin. Sasla.
Yes.
Welton.
Yes.
Charis. McGinn.
Yes.
Mazzulis. Turco.
Yes.
Rozignol.
Yes.
Melville.
Yes.
O'Neil.
Yes.
Motion carries 11 to 0.
Councilor Turco.
No further motions.
Thank you, Councilor Turco. Councilor Rozignol.
Thank you, Mr. President. First, I would just like to let the council know that the Rotary and the PBD Area Chamber of Commerce will be having a scholarship fundraiser, golf tournament, golf outing on May 13, and this is for a scholarship fundraiser to support our students. So, I just wanted to let the council know that on May 13, there will be a golf tournament to help with their scholarships. The second thing I would just like to say, today is Greek Independence Day, and I know we've been in here, and we've been in here for a few hours now, but outside, actually, City Hall is lit blue. So, the mayor has made a proclamation that today, made a proclamation for Greek Independence Day, and I'd like that to be actually a co-proclamation from the city council as well as the mayor's office, and I'll read the proclamation. "A resolution, the city of PBD by through its honorable mayor, Ed Betancourt, and the honorable city council, the people of ancient Greece, whereas the people of ancient Greece developed the concepts of democracy in which the supreme power to govern invested by the people. Whereas the movement for Greek independence was inspired by heroes of the American Revolution, after heroes, insert, I'm sorry, while Americans fought alongside the Greeks in their fight for Greek independence and the desire for the people of Greece to be free. Whereas the Greek national anthem, the hymn to liberty, includes the words most heartily was glad, gladdened George Washington's brave land. Whereas Greece historically resisted Axis forces at a crucial moment in World War II. Whereas Winston Churchill said that if there had not been the virtue of courage of the Greeks, we do not know which the outcome of World War II would have been, and no longer will say the Greeks fight like heroes, but heroes fight like Greeks. Whereas the government of Greece has taken important steps in recent years to further cross-cultural understanding, re-approach, and coordination of various fields, enhancing the stability of wider ranges, who are at the forefront of efforts to advance freedom, democracy, peace, stability, and human rights. Whereas those efforts and similar ideas and values have forged a close bond between the people of Greece, Greece children, and the United States, and the city of PBD. Whereas the city of PBD has warmly embraced and welcomed immigrants from Greece into its community and its home to the largest Greek Orthodox community in New England through Saint Basilios Greek Orthodox Church, which had existed here since 1912. Whereas PBD's Greek community, through their collective dedication and hard work, have helped advance the cultural diversity of the city of PBD, wherein citizens have become notable entrepreneurs, business leaders, scholars, lawyers, doctors, judges, and leaders in their fields. Whereas in, it's proper and desirable for the city of PBD to celebrate March 25, 2021, bicentennial Greek Independence Day with the people of Greece and PBD's Greek community to reaffirm the principles and values upon which Greek, Greece and the United States were founded. Now therefore be it resolved that the city of PBD, through its honorable mayor, Edward A. Betancourt Jr., and honorable city council jointly proclaims March 25, 2021, to be Greek Independence Day, and extend warm congratulations and best wishes to the people of Greece, the PBD Greek community, as we celebrate with them the 200th anniversary of its independence. I'd like to make a co-motion with Councilor Mazzulis, supporting this proclamation. So moved.
Thank you, Councilor Rozignol. On that co-motion from both Councilor Mazzulis and Councilor Rozignol, on the proclamation, any discussion? Councilor Mazzulis.
I just wanted to say, great job, counselor. And I'm very proud to be a Greek, a Greek immigrant. Thank you.
You're welcome, Councilor Mazzulis. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call vote, please.
Councilors Gould.
Yes.
Manning Martin.
Yes.
Sasla.
Yes.
Welton.
Yes.
Charis.
Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
Mazzulis.
Yes.
Turco.
Yes.
Rozignol.
Yes.
Melville.
Yes.
O'Neil.
Yes.
Motion carries 11 to 0.
Councilor Rozignol.
No further motions this evening, Council President.
Thank you, Councilor Rozignol. Councilor Melville.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Councilor Turco touched on something I was gonna talk about as well. On Wednesday morning, I was in Strong Water Brook, and due to erosion and the last couple, it's, it's basically, it's got a lot of rocks and whatnot is collected and has caused the water to rise, which causes it to erode. Over a couple of dozen trees have gone down into the brook the last couple of years. So, I had some folks from DPS and the Forestry Department out, and they were talking about exactly this choke point and whatnot, so I would, I would ask that when we do participate in that, Strong Water Brook would be something we look at as well. I'm sure we'll come up with some more, but I was gonna discuss that tonight, and I thank those, those folks from the Forestry Department for coming out. The second thing is regarding the 2021 municipal elections, the, in discussions with the city clerk on the current status, there's a, we're, we're in a kind of a unique phase right now where we're waiting on guidance from the state on what the, how, and what we can do on adjusting, if we needed to do adjust polling locations, and I would like to have a city council Subcommittee of Legal Affairs to discuss that. I would, I would request it be an off night, just because we're not gonna be rushed, and we would invite the Board of Registars, the city solicitor, and the mayor, along with, obviously, the entire council, to discuss that and get an update from our city clerk on what she has currently received for information from the Secretary of State's office, along with any feedback from the 2020 general election and presidential election and how that went. So, so moved.
Thank you, Councilor Melville. You've heard the motion. Any discussion? Councilor Sasla.
Yes, through you, if I could, to, 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 is the latest update from the state that they approved mail-in ballots till March 31? Is that the latest that I thought I had read? I'm just curious.
I think they just updated it to June 30.
June, it's June.
June, June 30. So, I mean, we could certainly have the discussion. I, I know that I'm gonna kind of look to see what the state legislature is kind of, you know, the Secretary of State, Galvin, is looking at. I just, I just, you know, caution, we're many months away, and I just, I think the discussion is great, Councilor Melville. I just feel that to make a decision, you know, too far in advance is something I'm a little bit concerned about, and just, I'm just expressing that. I'm open to discussion, but I would just like to see, as you said, yes, the Board of Registars, but I just would like to try and, you know, see if we can get back to normalcy, but, you know, I'm open to discussion, but I just don't wanna, you know, be asked to make a vote when we're months ahead of the primary, never mind the general election. Just my thoughts. Thank you.
No problem, counselor. Just on that, one way or the other, we're gonna have to do this, and the reason is, is we have, we use a lot of private, and this is based off of information I've gotten from the clerk's office, but we use private locations, and so one way or the other, we're gonna have to adjust in various, either we'll stick with our 2020 presidential election locations that we, we've established, or we, or we're gonna have to wait to hear what the temporary changes that they possibly could give us or possibly won't give us, and we'll have to make the change anyway, because we're not gonna be allowed in certain locations that we used previous to 2020. So, that's kind of why I want to get the discussion started now. We can, we can flush out, because August is, I think we did this, made this decision last August, and it really put the logistics of the elections folks in a real bind. So, I, I hope everybody has opinions and thoughts. We'll gladly take them, and I look forward to the discussion on it. I think it's a complicated situation, because PBD is unique in this one, where we're waiting for temporary, we have some temporary, we're waiting for temporary orders that we used two years ago, last year, while also having locations that we're gonna have to change anyway. So, anyway, so, I know there's a motion on the floor.
Thank you, Councilor Melville. The motion still is on the floor. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call vote, please.
Councilors Gould.
Yes.
Manning Martin.
Yes.
Sasla.
Yes.
Welton.
Yes.
Charis.
Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
Mazzulis.
Yes.
Turco.
Yes.
Rozignol.
Yes.
Melville.
Yes.
O'Neil.
Yes.
Motion carries 11 to 0.
Councilor Melville.
No motions this evening.
Could I get someone to?
Move to approve, all, all papers being in order, 2021 renewal for Class 2 motor vehicle license for Elite Motors Cars, 93 Lynn Street, Mike's Customs Auto Body, 100 Bernie Street, and Tri-State Auto Sales, 248 Newbury Street. So moved.
You've heard the motion from Councilor Melville. Any discussion? Councilor Manning Martin.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you to Councilor Welton, regarding Elite Motor Cars, 93 Lynn Street. I know over past several months, they had 15 to 16 cars, and I know I had contacted you, but you were busy having number five, so you and I did not touch base after that. So, did you have enough opportunity to talk to them and tell them they're supposed to have 13 and, you know, knock it off?
If I, if I could clarify on that, for, what I was able to find out is that there's 13 cars, unregistered cars, that they can have in that lot at any given time. I have not had an opportunity to be in touch with the owner of Elite Motor Cars, but I did get that, that clarification that it's 13 unregistered cars, and I do know that when I went to check shortly after, there were a few that were registered that were there as well. I don't know if those are the owner's cars or whatever, but I do know that it is, it's close to the max that they have there, and I can certainly follow up, and if, if we want to hold off on that, if that's what you're proposing, or?
No, no. As long as you're giving it the attention that it deserves, and it sounds as though you are. That, that corner, as you know, it's just, it's a bad fit for that type of business, and then that whole area is really just getting like the Wild, Wild West over there, and so as long as you've got your eye on it, because you know that I do, I'll just give you a buzz when I see something that we need to address. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate you bringing that up, and I can, I'll follow up with you separately, but I can follow up this week with him to check in. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Welton and Councilor Manning Martin. The Councilor Melville's motion is still on the floor, and he did add all papers being in order. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call vote, please.
Councilors Gould.
Yes.
Manning Martin.
Yes.
Sasla. Welton.
Yes.
Charis. McGinn.
Yes.
Mazzulis.
Yes.
Turco.
Yes.
Rozignol.
Yes.
Melville.
Yes. Yes.
Motion carries 11 to 0.
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Councilor Melville. I have no further motions, orders, or resolutions. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Thank you. You've heard the motion by Councilor Melville. Roll call vote, please.
Councilors Gould.
Yes.
Manning Martin. Sasla. Welton.
Yes.
Charis. McGinn.
Yes.
Mazzulis. Turco. Rozignol.
Yes.
Melville. O'Neil.
Yes.
Motion carries 11 to 0.
This meeting is now adjourned.